And I am going to read about the Lord.
Hail, Lord of the heavens! My God, let us pray. First verse. 12. Hail, Lord of the heavens! Let us pray. The Lord is our God.
Matthew Gospel, Chapter 7, Verse 7.
Matthew 7:7.
Ask. Ask and it shall be given you. Seek and you shall find. Knock and it shall be opened unto you.
You have been asking me. I have been praying for a long time.
We have sung a song also that ask and it shall be given unto you.
In that song, there is one perfect word is there. There is a word in that song.
There is a word in that song. Stance, last phrase. Every stance, every charan.
There is a word in that song. You pray for your benefit. I pray for my benefit. Why do we pray? Why do we pray? For our benefit.
Our benefit.
When we ask, the Lord will definitely give. When we ask, the Lord will definitely give. Samuel, verse 1. First Samuel says. When he was asked, he said, "Hannah." When he was asked, he said, "Hannah." When he was asked, he said, "Hannah."
And we will read 1 Samuel, Chapter 1, Verse 10, 11, 12.
We are going to read about Samuel 1, 10, 11, 12. When he was asked, he said, "Hannah." 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 I am going to pray. I have been praying for four days. I have been praying for four days. When I was praying, I was thinking about my sins. When I was praying, I was thinking about my sins. When I was praying, I was thinking about my sins. When I was praying, I was thinking about my sins. When I was praying, I was thinking about my sins. I have been praying for a long time. 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 Before we go into our message, we have been praying for four days.
So whatever we have meditated so far, before we go into our message, four brothers will tell the first four points and then remaining sisters will tell.
When we are praying, we have to learn four things. There is a place of praise.
Place of praise.
First four brothers. Second four sisters. God's presence. Like the presence of God. Protection. Pardon.
Four brothers.
Four, I believe.
Yes, I believe.
Pardon.
Pardon.
Peace. Progress. I will tell you nine. It is the place of power.
Place of power.
Okay? There is a place of power. The Lord is our God.
The God's presence is the presence of power. Place of power.
When we are sitting in the presence of God, there is a power. When we are sitting in the presence of God, there is a power. In order to protect the people, there is a power.
And we can see the power which we, the people who are saved, what they have is resurrection power.
When we are praying, there is a power. In order to protect the people, there is a power.
And we are not weak, we are powerful people.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
So when wherever we are, that when we close our eyes when we pray, that power will come.
When we are praying, that power will come. When we are praying, that power will come.
So Paul, the apostle, he says, "To have that power of the resurrection, I count all things as a dunk."
When we are praying, that power will come. When we are praying, that power will come.
And Philippi, Chapter 4.
Philippi, verse 10 and 11. 10, 11. This is the verse.
And we will read altogether.
This is the verse. Chapter 3.
Chapter 3.
10 and 11.
Philippi, Chapter 3, Verse 10 and 11.
Philippi, verse 10 and 11. When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And here we see, verse 8 in English, "I count all things but the loss, and that's why he says that I may know him the power of his resurrection."
There is a power. 10, 11.
8, 8.
When we are praying, there is a power.
And here, verse 10, he says, "I may know him the power of the resurrection."
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And we should know the power of the resurrection.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And many times that we think that we are powerless.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
So that we should know that because we are raised by the death of the Lord Jesus Christ, that's why we should understand the power of the resurrection.
When we are praying, there is a power. What is the power of the resurrection? When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And making the death to life.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And what is this resurrection power in our life, what it will do?
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And it will change the death to life.
When we are praying, there is a power. What is death? When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And we can see that death means there is nothingness, there is all waste, good for nothing. But when we see, it gives life, but from the death to life, the things which are moving, which has life.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And if you meditate, that Lord will reveal many things.
When we are praying, there is a power. This is the first verse.
And the tenth thing, in the presence of God.
When we are praying, there is a power. This is the place of prayer.
It is the place of prayer.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And the chorus, they are praying as a law, Lord of hosts.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
Oh Lord, God of hosts, hear my prayer.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And who is going to hear our prayers?
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
God of hosts.
When we are praying, there is a power. He is a king. When we are praying, there is a power.
And he is the lord.
When we are praying, there is a power. He is a creator. When we are praying, there is a power.
And he is the, he is having power.
When we are praying, there is a power. He is the one who fulfills all our needs. When we are praying, there is a power. Now Samuel, Hannah also praying in this manner. When we are praying, there is a power.
And here Hannah also praying, "The Lord of hosts, Lord, hear my petition. Hear my affliction. Look unto my affliction."
When we are praying, there is a power.
Verse 11.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And Hannah was a very wise man.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And we see, if anybody is wise, they put the vow also very wise.
Invest wisely.
Investing, yeah, investing wisely.
When we are investing, there is a power. When we are investing, there is a power.
And if anybody invests in the wasting.
When we are investing, there is a power. When we are investing, there is a power.
Anywhere you put your money.
When we are investing, there is a power.
Useless.
When we are investing, there is a power.
Do we spend our money on waste?
When we are investing, there is a power. When we are investing, there is a power.
And if anyone has a wisdom, they will not waste their money.
When we are investing, there is a power. When we are investing, there is a power.
And the person who are having a wisdom, that they will not waste their time.
When we are investing, there is a power. When we are investing, there is a power.
And we see Hannah where she is investing.
When we are investing, there is a power. When we are investing, there is a power.
And Hannah's life, when we see that she was a barren woman.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And she was in pain.
When we are praying, there is a power. Her sister, Penina, also worried about her.
And Penina also put her in trouble.
When we are praying, there is a power. 6. 6. When we are praying, there is a power.
And her adversary also provoked her sword and to make her fret because the Lord had shut up her womb.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And Hannah had an issue.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And she has no issues with her husband.
She is not fighting with her husband.
She is not fighting with her husband.
When we are praying, there is a power. Jacob also fought.
And with Jacob, there is one woman strived with him.
When we are praying, there is a power. Who said? Rahel.
Give me children.
Give me children.
Give me children or die.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And Hannah did not do that.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And when Hannah has a problem, what she did?
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And it was a family problem.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
We have also many problems in our family.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And maybe some financially.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And relationship problem.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And maybe work related problems.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And we always fight with the problem.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And Hannah was a very wise woman.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And she did not fight with the problem.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And we see that she is not investing her time in the problem, but that time she was investing her in the presence of the Lord.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
That's why she went to the presence of the Lord.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
Oh Lord of hosts, if though we will indeed look on the affliction of thine handmaid.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And if, when she was praying, she has a problem surrounded by her or not.
When we are praying, there is a power. Is it?
Full of problems.
Full of problems. When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And we can see, she did not put her mind and the time on that problem, but she put her time and investing her time in the presence of the Lord.
When we are praying, there is a power. I will say.
And what we can say this?
When we are praying, there is a power.
In spite of difficulty, she was praying.
When we are praying, there is a power.
So when we have a difficult, when she has a difficulty, she was praying.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And even the adversary, Penina also discouraging her.
When we are praying, there is a power. In spite of discouragement, she was praying. When we are praying, there is a power.
And in spite of discouragement, she was praying.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And what we have to learn the prominent lesson here.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And we have to, in the presence of the Lord, we have to invest our time in prayer.
When we are praying, there is a power.
For our family.
When we are praying, there is a power. This is the first part. When we are praying, there is a power.
Secondly, second point.
When we are praying, there is a power.
How she is investing her time?
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
Very perfect word she says here.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And remember me and not forget thine handmaid, but will give unto thine handmaid a man-child. Then I will give him unto the Lord all the days of his life, and there shall no razor come upon his head.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And Lord, give me a man-child you are going to give me.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And in the second investment, what she was doing?
When we are praying, there is a power. In faith, she was investing.
And in faith, she was investing.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And first we have to put our, invest our time for our family.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And we have to put that investment on, with faith.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And what, what is the third investment?
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And when times we invest.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
We doing or not?
When we are praying, there is a power.
And it is the investment that we are sending our children to school, we are investing on them.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And what she is investing to the Lord?
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
Lord, I am praying, Lord.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And if I ask, you will give me.
When we are praying, there is a power.
And if you give me a man-child.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And Lord, I will give him unto you.
When we are praying, there is a power.
And she is putting her investment for the future.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And three F, I said.
When we are praying, there is a power.
F, F.
Three, three F. First F, then the next F. First F. First family. Second investment, what is it?
Faith.
Faith. Faith. What is it?
Future.
Future. Future. Tell us.
What is the result?
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And here we see, even though the priest Eli was also mocking her.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And she was investing on prayer.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
Lord was merciful and Lord is gracious and Lord gave her a male child.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And you can see after the, she dropped that child in the house of the Lord.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And one, Chapter 1, Verse 28.
When we are praying, there is a power.
Therefore I have lent him to the Lord.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And as long as he liveth, he shall be lent to the Lord.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
Chapter 2, Verse 11.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And Elkanah went to Rama, took his house, and the child administered unto the Lord before Eli the priest.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
Chapter 2, Verse 26.
When we are praying, there is a power.
And the child Samuel grew on and was favored both with the Lord and also with men.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And last, this morning, we shared that what is growing in the, in front of man, in front of God.
When we are praying, there is a power. So Simon and Asaph said.
And they will say, Simon and Asaph, they will say no.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
Simon will say one thing and Asaph will say another.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power. Growing in the favor of man? For, growing in the manner?
Growing in the favor of men.
Social growth.
Social growth.
Okay, you should not forget. We have not discussed these things. And in the grace, in the grace of God, favor of God.
Favor of God, Simon.
Simon.
Favor of God.
Spiritual growth, right?
Spiritual growth.
Two growths are there, one is social growth, another is spiritual growth. So these two ways, Samuel said.
And we see, the spiritual growth and the social growth, Samuel grew on.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And we can see the investment of Hannah's result.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And Chapter 3, Verse 19.
When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
So we see, whatever the Samuel spoke, none of the words fall to the ground.
When we are praying, there is a power. 20. 20. When we are praying, there is a power. When we are praying, there is a power.
And don't to be a prophet of the Lord. And daan to beshaba, Samuel was the prophet. And many people, that we do, we have work.
Hamila chai kam garsaum.
Regional manager, general manager?
Regional manager, regional office, yes. And daan to beshaba, there is only one prophet, that is Samuel. And what a wonderful opportunity that God has given to Samuel.
Inado mana mu, mana beddalu, vari bau sheththu korakai, varu, prabhu korakai varbadali enti, mana mu kuda invest chaya.
And if we want our, our children to be used for the Lord, that we should invest for them. Investment. And not only Hannah invested in prayer. And one more thought I share, and I will close. And second chapter fifteenth verse. Verse one, na na?
Two, eighteen, nineteen.
Two, eighteen, nineteen, sorry, ah, one Samuel, chapter two, verse eighteen and nineteen.
Mana mana pillal ki, birthday vichinapudu, festival vichinapudu, manch manch dress kutistanda?
And we put, you know, when birthday come, we give our children the dress.
Every dress kutistam?
And what kind of dress we give?
Year ko type of dress entonda?
And every year, new dress.
Different models. Shop keldi, akaradumavathadi, ee the points of them kutich, ee the vala denjapi, next year, next model, latest update model.
New model we give.
Tali, Hannah, komodikichan dress indilsa?
And what was the dress Hannah gave?
A-four du?
A-four.
A-pode.
A-four du, eva reskuntaru?
And who will put the A-four? Priest.
Priest dress adhi?
Ah, pujaari le.
Some, they put police dress for our child.
Yeah, military dress kudashta, thurabi betti, any betti, easily betti, military dress kudashta. Edi vastaangani, priestly dress vayum.
We won't put the dress of the priest.
Devanamandra vaataavram samanchana dress vayum.
And we did not put the dress of the, related to the house of the Lord. And we, we will not put, and we also did not, we will not give it to our children.
Hannah, tana, ba- bedeekka, dress visumlo kuda jarthva.
And Hannah, even she was very careful about the dress of Samuel. And here we can see, the Samuel ministered before the Lord, being a child, geared with a linen apoth.
Hannah ekka investment, pettubadi, verdankale.
And Hannah's investment did not go waste.
More areas of investment chesindi.
And three areas she invested. Three areas she. Family.
Family.
Parivar.
Faith. Future.
Result enti?
What is the result?
Samuelu, pravakta yadu.
He became a, Samuel was a prophet.
Eight twenty pravakta yadu?
Daan to beshaba.
Eight twenty pravakta, how, what, such, what a prophet was?
One word did not fail. And one, one single word did not fail.
Prabhu mana saayapunagaka, alanti pradhana, mana chesakuddi pradhana, akamanchi investment to chesi, bau sheththu korakai, anekamanu gopposanga thul, prabhu dagamunchu pundutaku, prabhu manaandri ka saayapunagaka.
Lord may help us, that we may have such a prayer, should not waste prayer, it should, such a prayer we may pray, and we may bring great many things from the Lord. So, Lord may bless his works. Kindly be on your knees.